Started, is your thing recording?
Yes.
Okay, good. As a reminder, our meetings are recorded and they will be posted on our county's YouTube channel in the near future. There's no public hearing or hold items of discussion, I'm aware of. Either of you have anything? Okay, then moving on to new items of discussion, Grunderville landfill and the recycling project. Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, so I wanted to have a PowerPoint, but maybe fortunately I didn't get a chance to get that done. So instead, we will just talk through this. So what I wanted to do, since we're, I've been working with Dan Glotz on this, on a combination of this recycling program and then also the Grunderville landfill, I felt like this was a good time to give an overview of our status update on projects, simply because we're at a point now where we're kind of at a turning point, where we're going to be moving in a direction, and a lot of that has to do with, a lot of the work that's been done over the past six months paying off finally. So I'm just going to run through the recycling program overview document. I'm going to use that as a guide because that kind of gives the history of this whole discussion, just because we've talked about this, or I should say I've talked about this to some degree over the past year and a half. So in 2016, when we came into office, we were, the solid waste planning document, which was just passed for 2017, passed last year, was, they were in the thick of doing research on, to put that together with our consultant, Nestor Resources. Through that document, we had several meetings with Nestor, where they shared information, and it was clear that the county is not recycling at a rate that it could be. And it's, and in most areas, it's below the national average for recycling, especially with the harder to get rid of items, such as, you know, household hazardous chemicals, electronics, tires, you know, and various other items, household appliances, these things, we don't have any real official programs in the county. There are some businesses that do some recycling, but there's no effort to really, to really do any type of recycling in those areas. Areas that we do recycle are within the city, because of the number of people in it, they have mandatory curbside recycling, and so they pick up plastic, glass, aluminum, and cardboard. I think they still do glass, right? Do they do glass? Yeah. So, and then outside of that, there are nine, I think there are nine, maybe 10 drop-offs in various municipalities around the county, that have rollaways that were purchased probably 10 years ago, maybe a little bit longer, where they collect plastic, some collect glass, and then most of them collect cardboard and aluminum. And then obviously, the county does like several recycling events, or started doing recycling events, there's three of them a year, and then many of the municipalities have like drop-off days and stuff like that. So when we had the initial conversation about recycling in the county, and it was clear that the county is not recycling at a rate, at the same rate that we could be, the discussion started, okay, how do we improve this? What can we do to improve this situation in the county? Because frankly, anybody that's gone on one of the river cleanups, or has been out in the woods and knows where a lot of these materials end up, you know, as a part of just, you know, conservation and taking care of the forest, you know, this is, this is a real issue, especially in the outlying areas. We talked about having, you know, like supercenters, or having different locations that would be, like around the county that would do more than just do the recycling that's currently being done. Part of the discussion too, was about the municipal, trying to support the municipalities that do recycling, you know, it's a burden on them, they, they have to allocate portions of their budget in order to provide the service. For some of the bigger municipalities, it's a real challenge, because it is, there's a real cost to do it for them. And, and so we talked about having these supercenters. At the same time, we started initiating meetings with recycling programs outside of the county. So first one we went to was Elk County. That recycling center's probably been the most important in the, in our discussion about how we could do this potentially. Commissioner Caffrell and I, along with Dan Glotz and from the Conservation District, Heather Wilcox, went to Elk County and visited their recycling center. And it was, it was really well put together, and a real wonderful program. I went back, probably six months or a year later, and then spent a day working there in the facility, and to see how they have everything set up. After we left that initial meeting and came back to Warren, we were out at the warehouse looking for something, I can't remember what, and Commissioner Caffrell made the comment, you know, this warehouse, like we're under utilizing this, this would make be a perfect place to do a recycling center, the same way they did in Elk. Elk, in Elk, they had to purchase an old warehouse that was, I believe, used to make like wood pellets or something. They had to purchase the property and rehab it in order to utilize it, and it's roughly the same size as the warehouse in Starbrick. So immediately, a light went off, like, okay, how do we, how do we utilize this building? Because currently, small portions of it are being used for storage, for record storage, which frankly, is not an appropriate utilization of space, because there's a lot of moisture in the building. When I came into office, one of the few things after I was sworn in, that my father said to me was, he handed me a folder and he said, okay, now this is your job to figure out what to do with this. And I said, what? He said, the warehouse in Starbrick. He said, I've been trying to sell this thing for years, no one will buy it. And he said, it's, you know, it's deteriorating, like you need to do something with it. And, and the rest of it's just empty space. So with, you know, we started looking at that and having different conversations with different people about how the site could potentially be used. I went, I also went to Indiana County and did a tour of their facility. Indiana County has IUP, and they have quite a few more people than we do. You know, they have a huge program with nine full-time staff, and they're, they're pulling in tons of material. Also went down to Tidyle, and twice, and went and worked in their facility down there. They have an all volunteer program that's run by the Lions Club out of Tidyle. They actually produce a $10,000 surplus out of the program, that they donate back to the municipality, that they use for different programs within the, within their, within Tidyle. So we had all these conversations, and then it was, okay, well, if we're going to use it, how are we going to pay for it? How are we gonna, you know, the, the building's going to need some level of rehab in order to function. We're probably going to need a coordinator, and how's that all going to happen? So during one of the two visits down to Elk County, I said, how did you guys start this up? Or what, how did this get started? And basically, they told me that in Elk County, they had shut down their landfill, and the closure fund for the, for Elk County was then utilized to pay for the startup of the recycling program. They actually still pay some of their staff out of the recycling fund. It, I'm not sure how long that's going to last, but that's the allocation that the county makes, is from the recycling, or from the closure fund. Most of these programs, you find a mixture of funds, so, you know, like in the case of Elk County, a small portion of it is from the closure fund, another portion of it is from grants from DEP, and another portion of it is from the actual material and money that they get from recycling the material. So when they said that, a light went on, because one of the other things that my father bequeathed to me and to this board, is the Grunderville landfill, which has been shut down since 1991, and has been in a state of post-closure for 30, almost 30 years. We came back, you know, as, you know, the concept of using it as a funding stream, we came back to the county and then started researching the, the information on it. And it's, and it's like most things that have kind of gone dormant, there's, there's information all over the place, and you kind of have to run around and talk to a lot of different people in order to find out what happened, how it got to where it's at, and what we can do to move forward. So essentially, when the site was first shut down, there were 12 monitoring wells that were generated on the site in order to test the water, the groundwater. The site was capped, has a cap of earth and gravel that's put on top of it, it's mowed on a regular basis to prevent trees from growing on it in order to break the cap. And it's basically sat there for, for all this time. Over that time, the number of monitoring wells has been reduced, as each one has produced a cleaner result, as far as like the material that's being pulled out of the ground. There are now two monitoring wells that remain on the site, that continue to pull material out of the ground. And, and we got basically, there are several boxes of information related to the site, that we've kind of sifted through over time in order to kind of move forward on this. So that led to last year, Dan Glotz and I went to DEP in Meadville, and had a meeting with the regional director there and their staff, and had a long conversation about the Grunderville landfill. And tried to get a solid perspective on what it would take to shut the site down completely, and get a closure certification, which is DEP's official proclamation, that the site is environmentally sound, and that it can achieve closure. And then what that would look like. They basically told us a couple of things. One is, you need to follow the closure plan that, that was generated in 1992. And, and then the second thing was, that if you shut the site down completely, then the money will be turned over to the county, in order to be utilized for whatever programs you see there. We asked what, we took a look at the closure plan and asked, okay, so what, what does this involve? Because the closure plan, to some degree, is a little bit vague. It talks about the capping of all the wells, the removal of the material at the site, but it doesn't get into much detail other than that. And, and basically what they said is, is that you need to hire an environmental consultant that will come in and evaluate the test results and the condition of the site, and then basically provide DEP with the information for them to give the green light to completely cap all the wells and shut the site down. And so they gave us a list of 10 or 15 different agencies that, that could perform those functions. I called all of them, and we started a conversation, Dan and I sat through probably eight or 10 phone calls with different agencies, basically giving them, and what we handed them was this document, which has links to some of the materials that we have, and then also like a background and some information on, on what we're looking for from the agencies. That happened about a month and a half ago, maybe two months. In that time, we've received two proposals, which I forwarded to the other commissioners this morning. We're going to be looking for two to three more proposals, and basically, the other agencies are waiting for a little bit more background information from us, in order to provide proposals. The initial proposals that we've received have been between $9,800 and $19,800, so a $10,000 swing. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we don't have spec documents on what exactly we're looking to get. We're really looking for a consultant that's going to come in and help us generate the material that's going to have the shutdown. Now, I, the other thing is, is that in the interim, we have had meetings with both Bob Carlson, who is the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority, and basically asked for his consent to utilize the closure fund dollars to pay for the coordinator to help us shut the site down, so this won't cost the county any money. This will come out of the closure fund that would eventually become the county's if, if the site's completely shut down. We've also had a meeting with the ANF. This is another important detail that I forgot to mention. The, the land is actually owned by the ANF, and is leased by the Solid Waste Authority. This is probably the biggest reason that the site hasn't, in my opinion, been shut down to this point, because this is kind of unprecedented, even in Pennsylvania, to have a federal agency owning land that a landfill exists on. There probably is another place that's like that, but I'm not aware of it. So there's this, there are some bridges that need to be crossed, as far as the counties work with the ANF in order to make them comfortable with shutting the site down. As a part of our conversations with the ANF, we've illustrated to them that, that at least my intention is, and there may be, there may be covenants related to what we can use the money for when we get it. I haven't heard the details on that yet. My understanding is, is that it's ours, but that hypothetically, but that, I don't know if there may be environmental covenants on it, as far as like it has to be used for cleanup purposes. Either way, my intention is, is to use the money to rehab the warehouse, and then use it to start up the recycling program. The fund, and, and the, the meeting with the ANF was very productive, they were very interested in working on this with us. The idea is going to be that we're going to have our environmental consultant test the site, go through the information, and then go with us to DEP in order to make our pitch that the site should be shut down, or if it's in a state where there is work that needs to be done, that that work is started. It's important to note that one of my, the, another reason to do this, in my opinion, is if there is something at the site that is an issue that no one's aware of, it's better that we find it now and deal with it, rather than wait. The Solid Waste Authority is going to sunset in 2021 or 2022, I think it's 2021. The permit, the special use permit for the site is also going to end in 2021. And hypothetically, no one knows really what would happen after that point, if those two things disappeared. And it would be better for us to, I'm always the opinion, I'd rather be proactive and figure out what the issue is than wait and then have it be an issue later. I would also say that the, that we've sent the test results to many of the consultants that were, that were planning on having, or getting proposals on. In the conversations we've had with them, they've stated that from their just general look at the test results, the site seems like it's ready to be closed, that they felt that it definitely could be closed, and that really, that, that right now, all that needs to be done is all of the legwork in order to get it to where it needs to be, to be shut down. And so that's why I'm bringing it up to you guys, because I'm probably going to be, within the next two weeks, bringing more proposals, and then kind of making a determination of which agency we want to work with in order to move forward on trying to initially, initiate a shutdown of the site. I'm of the opinion that it's more important to have a good agency that everyone is comfortable with working with, than working with the cheapest company. This is a situation where there are environmental concerns and long-term liability issues that need to be addressed, and I'd rather have somebody that everybody was comfortable with than going with the cheapest, cheapest option. If we can get the site shut down through this process with the ANF, and it's also important to note that I'm pretty sure the ANF is going to need to have their own environmental evaluation done. If we can get the site shut down completely, the closure fund currently has some $700,000 in it, that would then become the county's money, and then we would utilize in order to start up this program. For me, that's a substantial enough sum of money in order to take a look at this and see if we can come up with a solution that everybody's comfortable with. The thing that I've always tried to convey to DEP and then also to the ANF is that, the hope is, is that this money will be used for, and the goal is, is this money will be used for a comprehensive recycling program that will help clean the forests up and the streams, you know, which I think solves a lot of issues for everybody, so that it's a good reason to try to shut the site down. So just to transition to what the actual program would be, if we, if we can get the site shut down and then also start our program up. Basically, the, the concept, at least right now, is a couple of things. One is, the facility, at least initially, is going to start small to some extent, and focus on materials that are not currently being collected, or that's going to be one focus. So tires, household hazardous chemicals, electronics, appliances, and other batteries, other difficult items to, to get rid of. There's also potentially, we might have a cardboard component to it, and there might be a few other things, it depends. It's important to note too, that we've gotten a grant from DEP for a recycling coordinator or a recycling consultant that's going to work with us on putting the plan together. That's already been approved, so we are going to be working with them over the summer, and we're going to put this project together for next year, hopefully. So the concept would be that someone can drive up, and for anybody that's not familiar with it, I'm sure everybody here is, anybody watching, the warehouse, the county warehouse is in Starbrick on Route 6, which is a main artery in the county, runs right through the middle of it, there's access from both ends of the county, it's also not hard to get to from the north. The facility formerly was a talk bus station, so there's areas within the facility that are wide open, that are bays, that they used to wash the vehicles in and park them and store them. There's a crane that exists, that still functions in the building, that's, that can move from one end to the other, that can drop and pick things up, you know, and it was used for, for the engines and equipment for the buses. Someone would be able to pull up through the ramp, we would probably install a door on the one end of the facility, drive in. The people working at the facility would take the, whatever materials they have out, they would then drive out the other end. I, my assumption would be that we would probably install doors, similar to the way they have in Elk County, so that you can drive in in the winter uninhibited and keep the heat in the building. Starting out, the facility would probably be open one day, and then move to two days once we had an idea of, like what the need and demand would be. If it's anything like a recycling events around the county, my assumption is that there'll be a great degree of demand for it. The facility itself, my, my assumption is going to be, or my plan, at least right now, is to have it be operated by a recycling coordinator that the county would have to hire. This person would be in charge of the facility, and also work a lot on sustainability within the county, consult with businesses and organizations within the community in order to facilitate their recycling, and then also do educational events and function as an educational officer too, on their cycling. They would be in charge of managing the program, which would then be, would utilize basically two pools of labor. One would be volunteers, which both Tidyle and Elk, Indiana did a little bit, but not so much, but both Tidyle and Elk basically functioned almost entirely on their volunteer labor. So we would be soliciting help from the community in order to help start this up, move it forward. I think that with the, with how good things have gone with the river cleanups and everything else, that this is something that, it won't be hard to get volunteer labor for. Second group is going to be, is, is we're going to be working with inmates, and this is going to be, the goal is going to be to have this be a dedicated community service option for people, at least initially in the prison, and then the hope is, is to expand it to people that have fines to pay off and other things, have them work within the facility as part of a community service effort. There are several counties that do this, well, there's a couple that I'm aware of, I think Susquehanna has, utilizes inmate labor, and there's a couple others. Most of the issue generally in other counties is, is that the recycling center's far enough away from the jail, that it makes it very difficult for them to transport. This is going to be within a five-minute drive of the jail, and I've already had conversations with Worden Collins, he's very excited about the, about putting this together and utilizing it. They're constantly looking for work, for work release eligible people. This would give it an opportunity to, to work in work release in an environment that's productive for the county. And then there'll probably be some minor equipment purchases. We hypothetically could end up with a, I don't want to use the term bundler, but that's not right.
Baylor.
Baylor. Then we'd probably need a baler, especially if we're going to do cardboard. The people at the Tidyle facility have volunteered to help with this, putting this together. They, their, their program actually, most of their equipment, pretty much, or well, actually all of their equipment was donated. They've also built some of their own custom equipment, which I was really impressed with. Carmen Fidel, I think, runs that program, and he's like an engineer, and he does a really wonderful job. And so my hope is, is that if we can get all of this together, if we can get the site shut down, and, you know, and everything runs smoothly, is to have this up and running by summer of next year. One of the things that I, a goal of this to me, for me too, is to figure out a way to have the, the program be self-sustaining, if we can run it lean enough with, and, and gather enough of the right materials. A bigger goal would be to have it subsidize some of the municipal programs, or subsidize them partially, just because I'd really like to see the municipal program supported long-term, because that's, that's a really important piece of the puzzle. A lot of people have gotten the opinion that recycling doesn't, like there's no money in it anymore, or it's done, and it's kind of, and if you're running a program to just make money, then yes, that's absolutely true, in my opinion. But if it's a community-based program, and there's volunteer effort, and there's ways to mitigate labor costs, there are ways to make money on it. And I've seen that now in Tidyle, I've seen that in Indiana County. Now granted, they're subsidized again by DEP, but they take $30,000 and give it to their trails programs for maintenance and upkeep and development on all of their bike trails within the community. I'd like to see, at the very least, that this program were to ever produce any kind of a positive gain, that it be given to the municipalities in order to help fund their programs, just so that they will stay in place. So with all that in mind, does anybody have any questions about that? Joe?
I want to compliment you on this, but the $700,000 you mentioned, some of that could go to the municipalities right now. You would get more municipalities to open up recycling. As you know, I'm from Glade, and ours is open 24/7, seven days a week, and we just had a cleanup day, a day then I should say, last Saturday, I can't believe it was. And we filled six of those big dumpsters, and we pounded it down all the time, so, so you know it wasn't all from Glade. And all of our recycling in Glade is not all from Glade Township. Many a people passed me when I was in office, can anybody come there? We always say, you're all welcome. And if you sit there on a Saturday, a cleanup day, maybe a fourth or a little more, our non-Glade residents, there isn't six gondolas packed to the gill from Glade Township. So I'd like to still see them open. We're the only one, I believe, and I'm not sure about health, but we're the only ones that are open 24/7. Yes, it comes out of the township's general plan. If they get a little more relief, they'd be happy, or ever have been happy.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think that's definitely going to be part of the discussion. The, the reason, number one, the closure fund is currently owned by the Solid Waste Authority, so our, we have no real legitimate control over it to some degree. The other part is, is to make sure that the site's completely shut down before any of that money is used for anything else.
I realize that, but another point you mentioned, the volunteers, and I like to compliment the sheriff's department. I don't know how many people in this room happened to go to Glade's cleanup, but you did not know that there were three
Sheriff's deputies.
Work release, people couldn't tell them, they were very nice, but there was no problems with them, they were out there all the time working, and I think we should get involved in work release people helping, so, that's all. I just want to see some help, maybe we can get a few more townships.
Absolutely.
Municipalities, so, but not counties, I believe.
Well, I think one of the things that's been really wonderful about this for me has been how positive all of the response has been, just generally, in that I just assumed that there would be a lot of people that would be kind of like, well, who cares? You know, and like Elk, is it Elk Township that just opened their?
Yeah, Elk Township.
I went up and talked to the township supervisors there, and they, you know, they seemed, they seemed kind of, at least, they made it sound like you know, they seemed, they seemed kind of, at least, they made it sound like initially they were ambivalent to it, and they said, everybody's been so positive to them about it, they want to keep it in the, in the, in the area. And then, like Eldred, I went up and talked to Eldred Township, and they said that since they put it in, they've seen a dramatic reduction in stuff that's ended up in their roadways as a result. And like, you know, and same with Cherry Grove, I mean, so people want it, they want the, the rivers and the, and the roadways to be clean, they don't want to see trash everywhere, and if this can help, you know, leave it at that.
Another thing you know is you, townships cannot get rid of electronics.
Yeah.
And, you know, others products that you had mentioned that'll be going there, and townships have tried. I think we had twenty-two tires that took us a long time to find a place at a distance that would be taken. So, yeah, the recycling bins within the county are very good, very helpful, because if you really look at them, and, and you always have the few that decide that's garbage, and but there's nothing you can do unless you have cameras that are actually hunching. But it's there for the convenience of Warren County.
Yes.
And we are doing it, we don't make the open key, we're not fenced in. Some townships, you have to check in, fence and prove you live. If you can't drop it at one of them places, where you can drop it on the way home and ditch. So that's why Glade's never locked it, or don't ask questions where you're coming from.
We, we know Glade better than everyone else.
Yeah. But we were one of, yeah, we were one of the first to try it. How can everybody fault? I think you have a good idea, and I hope it works.
Yep.
But don't plan on shutting down the municipal recycling bins, where you have just one, because you know as well as I, there's people all get a cool, although we're just Starbrook, but I live on the west end of town, that's too far.
Yep.
So, yes, I think you have a good idea of going, but the municipality is going to be a little more financial help.
With the seven hundred thousand, can any of that money be used in order to close Grundeville?
It will be. It will, yeah. So it's going to be something less than that. Like, I mean, because my assumption is that capping the wells in and of itself is probably going to be fifty thousand dollars, if not more. It's hard to say, and the quote, the quotes that we got for the proposals are to come in, help us go through all of the test results, make official documentation that we can take to DEP and get a green light to shut the thing down. Then we'll probably have to have a second contract with an engineer to actually do the plan to shut the thing down and, and cap all the wells and then convey that to DEP.
All that research money is coming out of the city.
It's coming out of the money, so whatever's left over is what would, is what we would end up utilizing. So, you know, so there's some incentive to try to keep that as low as possible. I think my thing is, is just to make sure that the site is, to be as transparent as possible and to, and to have the site be shut down in a, in a conscious, like an environmentally conscious way.
One other question, can't the AMF trust your people that decided to close it down? I know that's pretty significant.
Well, I mean, they're, they're, they're looking at it from a completely federal perspective, and to them, it's more a matter of liability. If somebody comes in and complains about water quality, well, we didn't mess it up, is going to be their perspective. You know, my, I wouldn't be having this conversation at this meeting, or talking with them, even if I thought that there was an issue with the site. Like, everything that we've seen has said that it's in a good state. So, that's why I feel confident, you know, that we can figure out a way to make it work. You know, and, and if, and if something comes out of left field during the course of this, I'm of the opinion that I would rather know about it now and deal with it, like, than have it, because it's going to come out one way or the other. But everything that I've seen has said that everything looks good better, so. We'll see. I mean, they're, they're just not going to, yeah, I mean, they can't, it's, this is where you get into this goofy liability issue, where they, you know, and I don't blame them, and Sherri Toon, who is, is the forest supervisor that we met with, is a very shrewd and smart and savvy person, and she's going to do everything by the bar, so, which I think is what they should do, that's what I would do.
How far does that have to go?
How far does that?
How far does it have to go for Sherri?
It's, it's, it doesn't have to go that far. Like, they, I, I think it's just the step above her, essentially, like, or in that, I think they have to find out who signed the special permit and then work with them on shutting the site down, which is on, I think it's one of, we would be Sherri's peers, essentially, in the, in the, in the group. I mean, they were kind of, when we met with them, I handed them a bunch of stuff, but it was the first time that they'd really talked about the Grundeville landfill, and a lot of those people who had only been there, yeah.
Long retired.
Yeah, many of the people that are there, I mean, and this is kind of why this is an important discussion to have, because once you started out, like, there were people in that group that didn't know that Grundeville landfill was a landfill. Like, didn't know that site existed, you know, and, and, you know, it's like, you get into this place of like, okay, well, what's, what's there? Like, what's, you know, what's the situation, and, and everybody just kind of forgot about it, so. They have to, they'll have to do some research. I sent them four, or seventy documents that we had dug up, you know, so they'll have plenty of reading there to go through.
How does that affect them, the tipping? Would that go away?
That's already gone away. The tipping fee?
Yeah.
Dan, correct me if I wrong, but that doesn't...
There used to be an identified tipping fee.
Fee from them, but that doesn't...
Yeah, we have to the landfills, but that is gone by the wayside a hundred years ago.
Yeah, which is, which is actually a big problem.
Challenge, yeah.
Yeah. Big problem with all of these programs. All right.
Anything else? From my part, I want to thank you for true leadership, sustained leadership on this issue. I know it was something we've been talking about now for, hmm, over two years, anyway. And I certainly haven't done anything about it, but I know you've been researching this, well-presented. It's so encouraging to see that you're taking the leadership on an issue that could be a real problem in a couple of years if we don't deal with it now. And not to mention the fact that we would like to see recycling increase, and I really have a heart to see the inmates used because of the fact that it can help them get out of jail sooner, that gives them skills, can help them work off their time and such. So, you know, well done, all the way around, and looking forward to future updates on what more we can do to advance this into a self-sustaining plan.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, there's nothing further. Any project updates from either of the commissioners?
I know there's something, oh. Just really quick, I wanted to let you know that I talked to Pam about scheduling town halls.
Okay.
It's something that has been kicked around or whatever, but we were talking about doing five of them, one in each corner of the county, and then one in the city of Warren. So, like Columbus, Southwest, Sheffield, and this is the price.
Rustle.
What?
Rustle or Scandia.
Well, Scandia's not a township I'm talking about. Yeah, I was going to say off, but I couldn't, I couldn't remember, because it, there's a thing that wraps around, anyway. I'm all visual, I'm like, is it something around there? So I wanted to see the needs. So the, so the idea, yeah, I can't remember. And so, the idea would be to do them one a week in the evening, like Wednesday, Thursday evening. And schedule them, like, a couple of months, or, you know, like, for a month and a half during the summer. And then go out and do, like, do Q and A and do some presentations on our projects and stuff like that.
Sounds fine to me. Are you comfortable with that?
Well, I don't know why we don't just call it a work session. I think that we could move our work sessions around county and accommodate our constituencies so that they could attend night meetings instead of us at noon. We get staff here, we don't get the public here.
Yeah, do you want to call it a town hall or what?
Well, the session doesn't matter. My, I think my only issue is, is that I'm not intending on doing any actual work there, like, I'm actually, it's a presentation, an opportunity to discuss.
We're not really working here, we're presenting ideas.
Well, I'm presenting it to you two, not to the community.
Okay.
And, and to get your feedback and stuff, I don't, you know, if we go to these things and you have feedback on what I'm doing, I don't really care, I don't want to hear it.
We say town hall meetings almost as if you're politicking.
Well, that's exactly.
It's a work session, we're actually asking our public to attend our work session. It's not too much about politics, it's about actual working desert camp.
It sounds to me like the purpose is to solicit feedback and questions and answers from the community, which is not the purpose of a work session, that is the purpose of a town hall. If legally it is a work session, that's fine, but it seems like the purpose of the thing is to have a town hall. And I'm all for engaging the community in a more meaningful way, in a way that they can access this more easily. I understand that people from Columbus, for instance, can't come to the courthouse at noon on a Monday. So if we want to have a Wednesday evening meeting at Columbus, fantastic.
Well, let's just put it this way, as like a compromise, I would have no problem canceling our work sessions during that stretch and then just stating that the, you know, that the evening, evening is, that's fine.
I have a. I, I could, I'd have commissioners' meetings in Glade Township with other boards, let you guess. At the meeting was two commissioners, one couldn't make it for whatever reason. And the people in attendance was me, because I opened the building up. And I think it was leading this just to commissioners' meeting, well, you know as well as I do on your Wednesday meetings, you know, people can't come. But if you made it a, like, a open meeting, and if you check the history of open meetings in other places, you have a lot of people that bring their bitches to you, because they don't want to come here, and they can't make it to your commissioners' meeting. But if they notice a town meeting, they may ask you about grasping too hot in the neighborhood. Those are questions that will come up, people will ask other questions, but if it's stated as a, an offensive commissioner or something on our idea, is people will come and ask some of the common questions that they have, but they don't want to bring it to you here in the work session or at your, at your commissioners' meeting. But if you have a town meeting, they'll get two or three neighbors to go and talk to you about it, and then you'll hear every complaint about everybody in the township, so I think.
Yeah, there have been previous boards that have done town halls, and, and I've heard the same thing, that nobody shows up, that, you know, and all this kind of stuff. And, and that's fine, like, my goal with this would be to promote, promote it a great deal, push people to go, you know, engage the local municipal officials to go, and have it be a community engagement effort. And, and at the very least, I don't want anybody to say that we're either hiding from the community, or we don't want to give them an opportunity to share whatever concerns they have. If they want to come and complain, they're more than welcome to do that, absolutely, like, I mean, about whatever's going on.
I think people would feel more relaxed at a town hall meeting, because they're not going to be the only, you're going to have turnout at these meetings, because they're going to ask some questions, and they're going to have neighbors support.
Sure, yeah. And, and that's my thing, too, is just like, you know, although we'd be doing, you know, there's a potential to do, like, brief presentations and stuff like that, really, I want it to be more of a, or I would like it to be more of a community engagement piece, where they have an opportunity to talk about the stuff that they're interested in.
Go ahead and talk about that, I think it's a good idea. So you're thinking July?
Well, Pam's working on it now, she's...
July into August.
She's contacting the, the different places and figuring out where to be and how to do it and everything else, and doing a very good job of it, too, so.
Good.
I sent the email out, and Columbus, within five minutes, called me back, get the details. And in another ten minutes later, she called me back, their meeting is that the fire hall has waived their fee, and they are very excited.
Dan, that's very good, good to hear.
I'm sure Glade would be getting Glade Fire Department on the evening, but you'd have to deal with the president board, I'd give you permission, but I can't.
Well, thanks, Joe.
Well, we could schedule, so you could do a presentation on how great Glade is.
I am willing to present the shock policies, but yes, I'm sure that the board, president board, announced, I can sell it to them.
Oh, they'd be, they'd be fine with it, I'm sure.
They have, you know, they have nice fire halls as far as hallways, and in decent parking, that's me, you know what you're concerned about. But yes, I do feel an open meeting would bring out a lot of things that even township supervisors may not know what's going on.
Absolutely.
And I, from my experience in office, the only time people come to a meeting, and they have them twice a month in Glade, is when they weren't doing something, then they leave. This way people would stay and maybe hear your complaint, my complaint, and other people's complaint. I think the open meeting would be the better way to go.
Good, thank you. Any other project updates from the commissioners? All right, next on the agenda would be the upcoming meeting this Wednesday. I do want to add, whether we vote on it at this meeting or not, even if we post home, post table, I'd like to put the Motorola agreement on the agenda. It is not in your packet, and the main reason is because it has proprietary information in it, so it largely has to be redacted anyway, but both commissioners, all three commissioners have a copy directly from Motorola. So, there will be nothing technically in the packet, but you already have the binder that's got the information in it. Again, even if we don't vote on it in that meeting, simply table it, appreciate the chance to have it presented to the board. Should you have any questions, of course, Todd Lake, Public Safety Director, will be able to either answer your questions or find out more, or run it through the solicitor to figure out if anyone else is asking about it, whether or not that is public information or not. Anything else that needs to go on the agenda? Okay, and I guess the agenda will stand. Department for Committee Updates, neither directors have something they want to raise?
I just, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to mention the judicial sale on Friday, if you're aware. So, in order to prepare for the judicial sale, I had to do research, we'll hire someone to do research, to find lien holders against the property, then serve them, so that those liens would be free and clear of the property. As a courtesy, we did a bring down about two weeks ago on those properties. We got four additional liens that didn't fly to those properties. So those liens would stick, they wouldn't be free and clear. So as a courtesy, we're going to make an announcement at the sale, and people know that these four liens would still be collectible. So I just wanted to bring that up to the commissioners. This is something that Attorney Sherri has sent us information on, and we've had a discussion about, and this goes back to the discussion that we had before about this situation with the judicial sale and people, because we had somebody purchase a property, and there was a lien that had been put on between the time that it had been set up. And I'm glad they felt that the bring down or whatever, and found that there were four properties. And at the time, when I, initially, when I asked them about it, I, I said, well, what is it, like, five hundred bucks a thousand? There was one that was like ten thousand dollars. A ten thousand dollar lien, which I think, you know, we, the properties previously were sold free and clear, but buyer beware, like, there's a chance that you can get something, I think. I think the question that we asked, or one of the, the alternate was whether we would hold the properties out, wait a year, a whole other year to have.
And your recommendation is up to four, three of them should continue to go forward and just announce it.
Which is, just leave them all, just leave them all, make the announcement.
Okay, so to be clear, that is above and beyond our legal duty.
Yes.
We are doing this to be, yes. Okay, I'm fine with it. Are all three commissioners on board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that the alternative, there would, there was so much work involved and everything else, it just seemed like it was counterproductive.
Right.
So.
Very good. Did you have something for?
No, I just wanted to say that, I just want to thank Lisa for the work that she did on this primary election. Thought it was one of the smoothest elections that we've had yet in, in the past two and a half years, and it really went well, and I was very proud.
Thank you.
Any other Department Committee Updates? Very good, nothing abnormal on my schedule. Oh, except tomorrow I got the meeting with Melissa Sankey. So that would be not an executive session, it's purely informational, whereas they're soliciting, they're telling us they're... soliciting, they're telling us their updates on what's going on since the extension. That's it.
Do you have one more?
Mr. Selly.
Can I speak? What, I know we discussed at your last commission meeting about improvement on nine-one-one centers, radios and equipment, and I asked what a price it would be. Do you not figure it's about time to modernize it all at once rather than piece-make it? I know it'll be expensive, but is it about time that we get the nine-one-one center the way that Mr. Lake and his assistant here would like it? Even if it costs a large amount of money, at least we would move into having the equipment we want down there, rather than get a piece today, get a piece next year. There's a very important section for the county, nine-one-one center, we all know that, if you don't, you should. So, why not work towards replacing everything that they want replaced, so that we're equivalent to any other county as far as the nine-one-one center abilities?
Well, that is the proposal that I mentioned adding to the agenda.
I won't be here for Wednesday's meeting, do another meeting, but I would love if you would allow me to make that statement, that would be my statement at Wednesday's meeting.
I appreciate that. There's another meeting you're going to, Joe?
Yeah.
I'm jealous. I thought this was the most...
You're not the only one, sir. So, on the Sherry side, it's the most, one of the most important areas in the county, and if they have trouble communicating, shame on you. So I know it's gonna be expensive, and it costs the task areas some money, which I hope it doesn't. Please, get the nine-one-one center equal to any county where we can stand problems, say, any problem created in Warren County can be handled by the experts down at the nine-one-one center. And if you ever listen to the nine-one-one center, I will never be a dispatcher, and bless their soul.
Ditto. Thank you for your comment.
That'll be my Wednesday comment, but it isn't mine.
All right, thank you. Anything else? For the good of the order, I'm not aware of a need for executive session right now, but as a general announcement, it's possible that the solicitor, if he finds anything further with the Motorola agreement, would need to call an executive session with the commissioners to discuss it. So I guess kind of be on call, be aware, look out for an email, even if it's not a meeting, you may send an email that's executive session exempt. Anything further? All right, I guess that'll be it.